Good evening. Welcome to the October 28, 2024, Twelton City Council Work Session. Our first item on our agenda is the Southwest 96th Drive Permit Parking Zone Request. And it looks like Chief Pickering will be here.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and members of council. I am Chief Greg Pickering, the Twelton Police Department, and I'm here tonight to bring the survey results from the Parking Permit Zone Survey that was conducted on Southwest 96th Drive in the south end of town. So as Twelton Municipal Code 8-1-252, the residential parking zones, that ordinance established procedures for residents to request a permit parking zone in their neighborhood. And one of the requirements of that ordinance is the survey of the residents of the affected area prior to establishments of the permit parking zone. On August 15, the mayor gave direction to staff to begin the process, looking at it, to conduct the survey on Southwest 96th Drive, which is north of Iowa, in the Victoria Woods neighborhood. So to the north of Iowa and to the west of Boons Ferry Road. So the box you see here is the affected street. It is a dead-end street that does really only have one way in and one way out. I did highlight, if you'll notice, the pathway that leads directly out onto Boons Ferry, which I think is what's causing our issue. So our issue, again, is high school students who are parking in a neighborhood and walking to get to the school for access. So what are the issues that have been reported? Hey, that one. So the issues that have been reported are non-residents parking in the public streets in front of the homes during school hours, some vehicles parked illegally in front of fire hydrants, mailboxes, and in intersections, some blocking driveways and preventing homeowners from parking in front of their own residents, litter and trash being left behind when vehicles leave the area, and there was a couple of reports of the street sweeper not being able to actually get down the street because the cars are parked too close together. So again, just photographs to show what the actual neighborhood looks like. This is, of course, during school, so this is a school time issue, as we've seen. And again, garbage trucks not being able to manipulate through the intersection or through the neighborhood themselves, cars parked the wrong directions, cars park-blocking driveways to residences. And again, most of these vehicles are only there during school hours on school days. So the surveys were sent to the residents on Southwest 96. They were sent in right after school started. The survey, again, asked the residents if they're in support of a permit parking zone for their neighborhood. If they answer yes, there's two options that they can select. So the first one is a 24-hour-a-day zone, so it would be a permit parking zone 24 hours a day, or a permit parking zone on school days during school hours, which is defined by the ordinances from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So 18 surveys were sent to the residents on 96th Drive. Twelve of the residents responded to the survey. All 12 of the residents who did respond were in favor of a permit parking zone. Eleven were for the school hours of, school days, school hours portion of the ordinance, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days. And one of them said, "We don't care. We just want a parking zone." They were in favor of either one. So also, the neighborhood, prior to the survey being sent out, had actually conducted their own petition. They used the petition that they downloaded from the city website and went to each of the 18 residents and did have signatures from all 18 residents at that time. And so that was also submitted along with that. So the recommendation at this point is based upon the survey results, asking from the residents on Southwest 96 is that we, the council, would approve a parking permit zone on 96th Drive for the portion of the ordinance on school days during school hours. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Counsel Hillier?
Thank you. I can see the need for this, but I am curious about if the school has been reached out to, I mean, what the plan is for these displaced student parking.
Yes. So this is actually kind of a two-pronged approach. So after the last permit parking zone, which was Blackfoot and Osage, we did hear from the council that there was some concern of how far does this continue to push out. What that led to is we actually secured some money in the budget last year, the police department did, to hire a consultant. So we've actually contracted with DKS Services, who is currently in a process right now, who's evaluating our permit parking zones, the process of how the, these zones are approved and obtained, and also, how can we potentially do this a different way. They've also, they have already done, I believe, two or three surveys of the school district. The school district has been very cooperative in this process, and they're looking at how we can address this more holistically throughout the city, not just specifically at the school, even though the school itself has been, seemed to be, the high school specifically, has seemed to be the biggest issue that we're dealing with. I do, I do know that the school has obtained agreements with two churches on, on Graham's Ferry Road, but they're not getting the kids to comply to park there. So we're looking at some other ways that we can work with DKS through this consultant process to see how we can potentially do this better, to not only just continue to push this farther and farther out as we continue to go.
Yeah, thank you, because obviously, a protective factor is children in school.
Absolutely.
And so, that is the goal. And I don't condone their bad behavior and their poor park, I don't, you know, be mistaken but that, but I am concerned about kids being in school. And we have a third of our students from Tigard, and most of them don't get parking permits to do, you know, so I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, and that's, one of the reasons we went with DKS is they've done several projects like this with high schools in, all over the state, actually. They've done several in Salem, several in Portland, where, the Portland especially, they have very small parking lots, and some of their kids drive, some of them don't. So they've, they've tackled several issues like this before, so they were hopefully a good fit for what we need.
But I hope so. And maybe some of the suggestions will be carpooling, incentivizing carpooling. I think that's something we all would like to see a little bit more as part of that. Anyway, thank you.
Counsel Sacco?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I expressed this with the last permitting that came before us, that I'm concerned that this will just become somebody else's problem, and that while these residents have expressed concern and they have legitimate concerns, that then we'll have another set of residents that will have new problems on their hands. So I'm not quite sure we're solving for anything if we approve this. And then I was curious, there's a list of what the issues are. How many of these issues are citation-worthy, I guess, would be the question? And are these drivers who are doing some illegal activities, such as parking illegally, blocking driveways, litter or trash, and can't always be identified of who the culprit is, but, you know, enforcing the behavior that is not allowed in this city already, to maybe help with some of these issues that are being created? That's one question. My second question, so what are the issues? Non-resident parking on public streets is allowed. I mean, and I understand does create some issues, however, I'm sure I park on city streets that are public when I, you know, at times, when I'm in certain neighborhoods. So also, sort of, where do we draw that line as well?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And yes, there's, there are some, if you, if you were to look at the photos, Bates, can I get that presentation back up? So you can see, so the blocking of the driveway is potentially a violation, the parking in the wrong direction is potentially a violation, but parking in a manner where, like, the garbage truck can't get through is not. That becomes more of a safety issue. So if you look at that to be a fire truck or some other larger vehicle, an ambulance, where that could pose a safety risk, those would not be ones that would be issued, be able to issue a citation to. The littering, again, is a tough one. It is a violation, of course, but finding the person that does it and how do you push that back, because that actually is a, is a different, you know, littering is, can be considered, construed a crime, so it's a misdemeanor to, offensive littering under the Oregon law. So there's certain things that, yeah, that some enforcement could, you know, could bring about, but there are also issues that were, you know, when you do have vehicles in the picture on the left, where, you know, they're bumper-to-bumper, from the dead-end portion of the street all the way to, there's a small cutout for a turnaround, you know, those vehicles are bumper-to-bumper. Those are essentially legally parked, but those cars are there from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and then they're gone. So, you know, the, one of the questions that came from the high school was capacity at the high school. The way that the parking permits are issued currently is, if you apply, they start from, obviously, seniors, you know, a seniority-type basis, seniors, then juniors, and then if there's any left for younger kids who may potentially drive. They get assigned a parking spot, and they don't take into account when they're there and when they're not there. And all you example, my son, who graduated last year, but as a senior, only had two classes a day, and had a parking spot that was vacant for a vast majority of the day. And so that's some of the stuff that DKS is looking at through this parking consultant project, to see if there's a way that they could manage the parking flow better at the high school, to alleviate the pressure off of the neighborhoods. The unfortunate part is, we're just not there yet, and so we continue to have the issues, you know. One of the issues is access. So the, again, highlighting the parking, the pathway that comes directly off of this neighborhood, just, actually, just a little bit north of the picture on the right, that pathway goes across there, and it's an unmetered crosswalk, mid-block. So it's kind of, it's not necessarily the safest way to get across to the high school, but it's easy access for the kids. If you remember, we had the same issue in Alabama, which is just to the north of this, of this neighborhood, the same issues, the same type of, of things that came about, and again, with another mid-block crossing that these kids could get across easily, which is why I believe they go to the neighborhoods versus going to the church, because they have to walk a couple more blocks if they go to the church, so.
Counsel Brooks?
Thanks, Chief. One of the things that I remember from this conversation was, pretty much, the rest of that neighborhood has permits except for this particular part.
Just one other street. Alabama has permits there, and then this would be the second one, and that on the west side of Boons Ferry Road.
Okay.
The east side of Boons Ferry Road, there are three streets that are directly next to the high school who do have permits on that side. Iowa on either side of Boons Ferry does not.
And then, I guess my other question is, too, I agree, I mean, we want to get to the root of the problem, and I think collaborating with the schools is one of the best things. And I'm wondering, too, just from something that Counsel Hillier said, if, you know, if there is an incentivization for priority of spots for kids that carpool, or ways to reduce the footprint that way, might be a goal that would cover a lot of different aspects. We were supposed to have solutions for this when the parking lot was expanded. I remember this conversation. This was supposed to be the end of it, and we're still dealing with it. At the same time, I also very clearly remember people coming with different ability kids that aren't able to get into their, in and out of their home, and that's causing big problems there. So because we don't have those extra solutions going on, and then the other thing I'm curious about is, from what I understand, they're looking at how the districts for the schools set up in general at the state level. And I think this conversation also is part of that, with people getting transported all over the place, and then right next door is, you know, a neighborhood that's supposed to go to Sherwood. And so all of that, just on face value, doesn't make a lot of sense. We've talked about this for a long time, so I understand how it makes sense, but it doesn't mean that there's not a better solution. And I think the conversation's really important, and I'm glad they're talking about it at the legislative level. And, but for me, for now, I support this proposition. Thank you.
Counsel Reyes?
Just a couple of, from this conversation, too, as I bring back memories and what we talked about. I am for safety, obviously, for our kids, but I do recall the same thing of kids violating, the, the high school students violating some of the, as you point out, very important things, such as fire hydrant, access to that, which the worst nightmare could be that somebody is in a fire, and then we can't get to there because a kid parked there, and we can find that kid to move the car. That, to me, would be devastating. And so I, other things, as Counsel Brooks pointed out, emergency caretakers that go in and out, we don't know if someone's having some kind of emergency at the moment, and then there's just, they can't get through that, that minute, that hour, that second, could mean a life to be saved. So I'm thinking of that. And sometimes, when we enable some of these other behaviors, that can lead into somebody else being affected by it in a negative way. And I really don't wish that upon anybody. So if there are rules and there are guidelines, then I need, I think we need to follow them. My understanding is that the kids, I know they have other places to park, so changing that behavior, and even though they need to walk a little bit, and we always talk about the environment and having more cars, and I mean, to think about that as well, this is part of this as well. So let's think about that. And also, to me, would make sense that, maybe not like all day, but definitely like the hours, the seasons that the kids are in school, maybe that can be the days where you have the restricting of those parking, that parking area. But I, I feel like it would be worse to have a car blocking someone that, that is having an emergency in a home around that area. And I know there are a lot of mature audience in that area and just ready to just dial 911 or something, and it would be devastating that something might happen. Fire, it's, you know, we can avoid that, we can do it. So to me, I'm in favor of, of having some restrictions and, yeah, for this parking area. Thank you.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Thank you for the information. This is wonderful that you went out and gathered and spoke to the community, which is amazing. Their voices are being listened to. The two churches that we, you're working with, is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saint, is that one of them, and then the Seventh Adventist?
You know, I don't, I don't specifically know exactly which ones the school district has an agreement with. I just know in speaking with Principal Delerba, he did express to me that they do have agreements with two of the churches on Graham's Ferry. So they've done that work already ahead of time, and I know that they've passed that along to the students, but, you know, kids.
In looking at the satellite images, those are the two nearest ones, where there's a sidewalk that leads them directly to Southwest Alabama Street, and there's a straight shot to the school. They're just kids aren't going there at this point. Yeah, so I, I guess we do have a solution for them. It isn't that we haven't tried. And I do support working with this agency you're talking about to maximize parking. But in the meantime, you know, the constituents want these permits, and we hear them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Hillier?
Thank you. I was just curious, the timing of the consultant's wrap-up and stuff, if you could speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, and Mike can maybe help me, because Mike's been helping me with this process, I believe there, there, if I remember the timeline correctly, we should have something back from them close to the first of the year. So, you know, their, their processes of what they do and put together, it's going to take them. I think they said it was about, about three months, so.
Counsel Sacco?
Thank you. I have one more question. So if this permit is approved, and then we get the information back from the consultant, in the permitting process, like, what are the, if this is passed, and it's, we decide that the whole permitting process has changed, and we decide that we need to revoke some permits for whatever reason, or a new solution comes up, is, how does that process work?
Well, I think that, again, so to add this street would be an ordinance change. So if, if the council were to agree tonight to approve this, we'll be back at the next meeting with the change to the ordinance. So if we do come through the consultant's process and find that the, the process itself needs to change, or the ordinance needs to change again, it would just be, again, changing the ordinance to reflect what, well, the council would change the ordinance to what they would reflect what the best practice would be at that point.
Counsel Hillier?
Could I follow up to that question, then, please? So are you saying that you would revoke things if the ordinance changes, or would people be grandfathered in?
Again, I can't answer that question until we know what comes back from the consultant itself. So I think we will, we'll take the information that the consultant has, bring that back to the council, to look at the process itself. I think that some of the discrepancy that happened back in August is, the residents on Southwest 96 felt like they were getting pushed to the side because we, they knew that the consulting was coming in to do some work. And they, they were like, hey, we have an issue now. We'd like to get this issue addressed now, and then we can look at things in the future, as we know if there is a better practice, or if there is a better way to do this, or to, to deal with this, to include the school district and the high school parking lot and what that looks like. But at this point, we don't know what that's going to look like, and we don't know what the results are going to be. And so I think out of fairness, we said we're going to move forward with the permit process on 96th until we figure out what that might be, which, again, may not be till the first of the year or later.
Just to clarify, if the, we get this report back, say, in January, and there's some great solution, we don't know what it is right now, and it solves the problem, and we don't need these permits, at that time, city council could?
Correct. It would be, it would be a change to the ordinance, so it would be brought to the council, and it would be the council's discretion on how to change. Again, I want to go back to the, when we put the permit process in place, I believe it was 2011, 2012, it was actually for an apartment complex. It had nothing to do with the school district. So it was apartment complex over on 115th, and the resident streets over there. So the permit process itself started for not a school district issue, and it has now really morphed, at this point, into an issue surrounding the high school and the parking at the high school. And so that's part of the reason we brought the consultant in, to see how we deal with this differently, and if we're doing this the right way. So to really look at the program holistically, rather than just taking an individual issue itself, and seeing that, making sure that we're doing this the proper way.
So right now, maybe my memory's wrong, but I, is it true that, I know there's limited parking at the high school, but I thought the principal had come and told us that with the additional parking at these two churches, there was plenty of parking for these kids?
With the additional parking at the two churches, there is plenty of parking. But again, the kids choose not to park there.
And it's been a while since I've been to high school, but are there still buses available for kids?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. Not for the activities. Okay, so I get the need for cars, but I'm still hearing that there are plenty of parking spots, and we have kids that just don't want to walk a couple blocks.
I, I think that's probably the, the main issue that we're dealing with when it comes to the high school itself. And again, to reiterate what Counsel Hillier says, that is, you know, there are buses that run on the normal bus schedule early in the morning, and it's when school gets out. The activities, or those kids that have late start or early
So they don't have activities buses anymore? I mean, it's been a while.
release. They, they, actually, the activity buses are, it's, it's a much different setup than it was before. I think there's one bus that runs one time.
So that makes it very difficult.
Yeah, three days, yeah. So it's, it's not a very great system for somebody who has a club after school or is involved in sports.
Or before school.
Yeah.
Because that, I think that's part of the bigger.
Okay, so there is a need for cars, but we, there is parking available for kids if they're willing to walk. Personally, I, I think it's, I agree with Counsel Reyes. I mean, if it, this looks like it's, it could be a danger to people, and I think these permits should be issued. So I don't know where we're at. Do we just need to give you direction at this point?
Yeah, so, yeah, at this point, so that you have the survey, survey results, the next step with council approval will be to amend the ordinance, and so that will come back at the next council meeting. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be the, the next step, was direction from council to move forward with the change of the ordinance.
Counsel Brooks?
I, I, I suggest that we approve the direction to do the school permit time parking, as suggested. And I also want to remind people, too, when there's limited parking on the streets, it affects the people that live there, too, and their convenience. And so to be at this place where they're at, and especially with vulnerable people that live there, that's my really big concern. I just don't want to see things go the wrong direction, especially when there's parking going the other way. And I appreciate all the work that you've done. Thanks.
So Counsel Brooks has expressed support of this. I support it. So could I just get a raise of hands of those who do support it? Okay, so you've got your.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll be back.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next, we have, next, we have website redesign, update, and homepage wireframe review. That would be Megan.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and members of the city council. As you know, I am Megan George, the Deputy City Manager in Twelton, and tonight I'm joined by two people online. One is Heidi Stanley, our Creative Communications and Marketing Program Manager for the city, and then the other is Dale Bentlidge, who is our contractor at Juicebox for the website project. So we're here tonight with two items. The first is to give you an update on the website redesign project, but really, the main event of the presentation this evening is to give you a look at our draft website homepage wireframe. And if you don't know what a wireframe is, I didn't either, but we'll get into that a little bit later. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump in. Hey, Bates. Thanks. Perfect. All right, so as you know, we launched this project in the spring, and Juicebox came on board in July, and they have been hard at work with our team over the past few months, getting to know our current website, our community, and our priorities as we work on redesigning the website. In your packet is a summary document of their initial work and to discover what they can about our community. And this phase was really important to ensure that we don't just end up with another municipal website. We want to make sure that the website looks like Twelton, feels like Twelton, and, most importantly, has information that is pertinent to Twelton community members. So we are still driving towards a launch date of June 2025 at this time. So these next three slides should look familiar. As you'll recall, one of our earlier steps this spring was to issue a survey to the community and our internal staff, and we conducted a few small group briefings with the city council. You've already seen the results, so I'm not going to reiterate them, but I included them because I wanted to illustrate that the feedback received during those initial steps was also used as part of this discovery, discovery phase with Juicebox. And so some of the things that you'll see over these next few slides that I've highlighted will show up later on, and certainly are reminiscent of some of the themes we found in our focus group discovery sessions. So to jog your memory on a few of the items we heard, and they're bolded on the screen, but finding current city events is difficult, a landing page calendar would be helpful, desire to have easier access to bill pay, and offer a more prominent language option, and more ability to change website font sizes. Looking at some of the takeaways from the staff survey, the current search functionalities are difficult. The calendar should be on the landing page. And then, of course, some of the takeaways from the council's small group briefings, desire for a better search bar, desire to add a warm touch for the community, and create a site that is clean and friendly. Okay, so now getting into the results from those focus groups. So we held two focus groups with internal staff at the organization, and then two focus groups for community members. So in that initial community-focused survey that we sent out, one of the questions we asked is, would you be interested in helping us later on in this process? And we got several responses there. So we were able to reach back out to that group of people and ask them to participate in one of our community-focused groups. We also reached out to each of our city advisory committees, as well as the CIOs, to get volunteers from those groups to participate in the focus groups. We figured they were a group of infested stakeholders. They access the city website, and certainly, they may have an opinion on how it currently functions and what they would like to see for the future. So through those meetings, we identified the priorities which are on the screen. So enhance search functionality and navigation, creating an intuitive calendar, modernizing and streamlining content, improving access to information and basic services, reflecting the culture and vibrancy of Twelton, event registration and volunteer opportunities, accessibility and multilingual support, and then improved employee recruitment tools for the police department specifically. So the attachment in your packet has a little bit more detail about each of those themes. We also got into community pride as part of those conversations. So this information was important for the website redesign, because it helps us to identify what we want to highlight for our community, about our community, for both those people living here or spending time in Twelton, and then those new visitors to our website. So there's lots of things that our community is proud of. Some of the themes that came up, which I imagine will sound familiar to you all, are Twelton's parks, trails, and green spaces, and then a sense of community, including volunteer opportunities, senior center programs, and overall welcoming atmosphere. And then, like community pride, we also wanted to be aware of what are some of the topics that folks are looking at into the future, so that we can make sure that they could find information on those things on our website as well. So one of the examples there is curiosity about projects, and optimistic about enhancements to existing infrastructure, like roads, bike lanes, and public spaces. Okay, so personas represent different visitor types and are designed to capture the diversity of people who use the website. types and are designed to capture the diversity of people who use the website. This list does not encompass every person who might visit our website, nor do the descriptions provided a hundred percent represent everybody in those groups. But we put these together to ensure that while we're designing the website, we're not too focused on one type of visitor to the website. We want to make sure that lots of people who access it can find what they're looking for and feel represented there. And that brings us to the main event. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dale, our consultant, who is going to share his screen and talk you through what a wireframe is and what you're looking at there. So with that, Dale, take it away.
Excuse me, I had my screen muted. It's great to be with you tonight, everyone. And I'm looking forward to sharing the wireframes with you. Before I do, let me give you a little bit of an overview of what a wireframe is and the function it does. We've had great conversations thus far and, and learned a lot about you as a community. And so our next step after completing those communication and all those conversations was to give you a summary of our findings and then also to present a wireframe to you. And a wireframe is much like a blueprint would be for a building. It's meant to give you the relative size and orientation of things that would be within the space, but it's not meant to be fully designed with all of the textures and the colors and the exact photos that would necessarily be used. It's meant to give you what's going to be inside the building and, and how much space will those relative things take up. So that's what we've got together to, to show you this evening. We did some refinements on this based on earlier feedback. And we feel like this has really checked the boxes for the objectives that all of our discovery groups wanted to, that were important to them. So I'll, I'll share it with you and then I'll walk you through it. And I would be happy to answer questions either as I'm going through it or, or if you want to save them up till the end, either would be great. Okay, actually, it's the wrong screen there. Apologize. Okay, here we go. All right. So this will, this is meant to show you what a desktop will look like. Of course, the site will be responsive to five breakpoints or it will adjust to the size of the screen. But this size will allow you to see all the elements most easily, what they would look like on a desktop computer. So at the top, you'll see that we have our logo and then navigation. So the dropdown navigation there will be things that people will use to find their way. So it's nice and intuitive. And then some of the convenience things that they're doing often will be right there at the top. So if they just want to pay their bill or contact someone and get some help, change the language, that was a thing that was talked about where the ability to change the language would be higher up on, on the site. And then on the homepage, right at the top of the page, we're trying to take care of people's objective that they're trying to accomplish in coming for the website. So there's a really convenient search. And we've tried to make it feel very friendly and welcoming, almost like the website will have a voice of what someone would walk, like if someone came into a city building and says, how, how can we help you today? And then in addition to that, we've got this section of things that people might be looking for often. They may not know the exact language that would be used for that thing. So this little trending area can be used to take people to a specific section that they might have an interest in. And this image can be refreshed and rotated either every time that someone comes or can change it out seasonally if we wanted to highlight different images around the community as, as the seasons change. And then as I scroll down through the page, you'll see that we've really tried to take your brand and give it a unique feel. We didn't want, it really came across in our discovery meetings that we wanted to have a sense of a unique identity. We're proud of our brand. We're proud of our history and our heritage. So we wanted to show that. So we brought these curved angles that are symbolically done in your logo into the images that we would use here. And this will allow people to go and see some of the main areas they would look at. There would be an image behind here, so people will be able to see something that visually identifies with them. But again, we're trying to keep it fairly generic and we're just thinking about the things that would go here and their relative size more than image. And then as I work my way down through the page, you'll see that there would be three kind of featured events of things that could be taking place right here. And then we've also got a list of upcoming meetings. So we can have a little bit of variety and highlight community-based activities or just upcoming meetings that may not need a text explanation as much of what that meeting is, because people will probably know. And then you'll be able to link and see the entire events calendar and find any meeting that someone is interested in. And then we invite people to be connected, more connected to us as a community. So be able to subscribe to like e-newsletters, e-notifications, but then also inviting them to follow us on social media. And then projects are really important. That really came across in our previous conversations. So we really want to make it easy for people to understand the latest information about projects that are going on and visually identify where that is. So we'll take them to a page that will talk about projects that will really be easy for people to intuitively find what they're looking for, either by their area or using a map. And this will kind of introduce them to that. And then down here, we wanted to let people know who, you know, that we're working hard for them as a community. And then all of you as elected officials are representing all the members in the community and, and provide information about you and then also links to things that people are interest, are oftentimes doing if they're engaging with local government. Of course, these would have photos as well, too. And then down here, we wanted to have some points of pride down here and really talk about great recognition, either some external recognition that we've gotten, like this ranking from Fortune, or maybe just comments from members of the community about things that they love about being in town. And then some convenience things that they would do often. So to connect the services that this, the city is providing with other things that you're collaborating with, whether it's the school district or whether it's police, that is certainly a department within the city. And then a footer right down here at the bottom, and the ability to jump to a directory. Questions, feedback. I can run through it from the top and then I would welcome any of your feedback or questions.
Counselor President, if I might ask a first question for Dale. Dale, could you explain why it's in black and white and then also why it is so long?
Yes, yep. That's a great question. So, so for this, what we're trying to do is sometimes people, they may or may not realize it, but people tend to gravitate toward their own preferences for things like color or image selection. So we try and not put too many images on the page where someone's perception of something could be changed by that specific image or by a color that's on the page. So we really want to think about, are we getting the right elements on here? And are they the relative placement and the size that we have? Are, are they right? And then the other comment about the length of the homepage of the city, it's a great question. A homepage on a website, one of the things that is really useful for is to establish your overall brand and to create a perception of people. Because people don't usually do that when they visit interior pages on a site. But on a homepage, they will spend time scrolling down and then just seeing what that looks like. So if I'm moving to the Portland area and I'm looking for a community and I'm comparing your website and someone else's, then I would, I would scroll down and I would get an overall perception. Does this look like a fun place to, you know, for my family? Does it have community activities I'm interested in? What's the, the feeling like? And they'll, so they'll scan down that experience and scan down the homepage. So on a homepage, we want to try and create that sense of brand and then also let people self-select. Some people will use a search bar, some people will navigate in the header, and then some people will just kind of scan if they're not quite sure what they're looking for. So we try and put a variety of things for that visitor so that whomever they are, they can get to where they want to do conveniently. And, and the length of it is, I'm sure you all have mobile phones and smartphones. There used to be an old rule for websites that was, oh, don't ever put anything below what the viewable area is on your screen. And people used to get really anxious about that. Well, we're all conditioned to scroll on our phones now because they, by their very nature, are very vertically oriented devices. And if we don't see what we're looking for, we just scroll down on our phone. So people are really conditioned to scroll on their phone if they're looking for something. Good questions. Any other questions or, or feedback?
How lucky to be recognized by Megan. My question is, the, this looks really great to me, but my question is if we had an emergency situation or something, and I'm thinking, like specifically, an example would be when we had the ice storm, it would, is there a place on the homepage that would say, sir, it's doing this thing and you could take your branches wherever, or something like that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dale.
Okay, great. That's a terrific question. So that, that's exactly right. There will be a section on the homepage. It will either move the entire homepage down or will have something that would display within the body of this area here, where it'll show that it's an alert. It'll have a different icon. And we can even do icons of different colors. So for instance, if it's an emergency, like because of an ice storm, we might have a different icon that feels like an emergency icon, that has more of a emergency type color that's within your brand versus if it's a reminder that our offices are going to be closed for Thanksgiving, then it would be kind of more sedate but present. And you can have more than one alert on a page for some reason if you have more than one thing going on at the moment. And then if I'm seeing it, I could also close that box out by putting an X on it. And then I won't see it as, if I'm going across the website. That's a really good question.
I'll add to that. So the, kind of those alerts that Dale is describing would be for imminent or urgent issues. For something like you're describing where there is an immediate issue, but this is more of a programmatic, here's how you can get a lot of information about it, we might use both an alert to notify people or lower down on the screen, one of these pop-outs could be used. Or in the popular searches, it might show up there for that time period as well.
Yeah, that's exactly right. You could, this is meant to be so that this section could be repurposed for something if it would be, need to be used for anything. Great comment, Megan.
Counselor Brooks?
So I just want to step back a little bit. My first question is, how often should we be updating our website?
I'll look to Dale to give your professional opinion on that. And then I can share maybe our practice in Tuolton.
Yeah. And when you say update, you mean like redesign, like start it over from scratch? Or you're saying like, I need to repaint my shutters every now and then?
Well, I think I'd like to know both.
Okay, that's good. So usually, like between four and six years is a good time. Technology and design trends evolve on the web more often than a lot of other industries because the technology is still, I mean, even though we've been building websites for twenty-five years, it, you know, we're still getting better with technology all the time and it's allowed us to do new things. But that's usually a fairly good practice. And then in terms of tweaking the design, we'll, we can do that more often. It, it depends on the extent of it. Everything that we're going to do for you is custom designed. So like the icons, the, 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 the way that you interact with the page, like it's all going to be just designed around your brand. And one of the things that will make sites go really out of date quickly is if they use like a template, like from, like that they've been using for a couple of years and they use a bunch of like stock icon sets that are very generic. So you feel like you've seen it a hundred times before. But in your situation, since everything's going to be unique to you, it'll have a longer shelf life just because it feels fresh and not like something you've seen a hundred times before. Does that make sense?
Yep. So, and then I guess...
Yeah, so in Tuolton, I'm not going to get the exact dates correct, but I think the last time we did a substantive website redesign was maybe two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And then we did a refresh in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen timeframe, which is when we did a little bit of an update of the logo and did some sprucing otherwise. But it, it has been a significant amount of time.
So this goes into my next question, which is, what would, where, like, how does this website redesign fit into the overall? Do we have a communications plan with stages and timelines?
So we do not have a communications plan per se. We have, we had a consultant maybe in the two thousand, two thousand nineteen timeframe put together a communication strategy that we have been implementing. We have not updated that since that time period using outside expertise. We have data points relative to how used the website is. We have a program called Site Improve that gives us analytic information. And then we, through our community survey, over the last, I think, three times we've conducted the survey, we've asked questions about which sources of information people are using. And the website has consistently been the top source of information and that's grown over the last three iterations of the community survey. But we don't have a put together strategic plan for communications at this point.
And then I guess, and I think I would like to see that kind of thought, just because I remember when I first came on and I was talking to Counsel, past Counselor Davis, and she was talking about, you know, like, we kind of got our emails really slowly, that we've kind of dragged along in this. And I would love to see us, I love that this is fresh and new. And I'm also kind of fascinated if you actually ride those unicycles. But...
Oh.
It's like, what? It's got unicycles.
Well, I have assistive sticks to help me stay in my, keep my belt.
All right. That's what I need. Assistive sticks. So...
Walking sticks.
Yes. But I love that it's fra, right, fresh and, and all that. And then, and I would like to think about how we keep doing, how we keep it fresh. And then the other thing I'm going to ask about is just because from coming from this policy perspective, I think a lot of times people are curious about looking up what, what the policy is about certain things by topic in history. And then also just, do we have a central place where all our plans are? Like the Parks Masters Plan, the Future Communications Plan, da, 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 da. So that people can see these all in a way that's together. Because I know we work on them all separately in these departments, but really they're together. And so those are, those are my big questions.
Yeah, I'll start with your second question first, since that one's easier. That idea has come up through our discovery sessions. And one of the ideas that we're playing, playing with is creating a kind of a document library for those master plans and other big substantive policy documents so that they are more easily accessible. I think that was of particular interest from our staff group, too, that even we struggle to find some of that information because you're right, they're huge, they're specific to a project, and they end up on a department's page or a project page. But there is connection between them and sometimes that can be hard to perceive, perceive.
And I think it would be cool if you could see like little books, you know, on one page where people could click on the plans and see the face, the covers of the books so that it's engaging, not just a list of heavy duty things with a, you know, a symbol that makes you know that it's got a lot of stuff in it.
Yeah. We haven't gotten so far into document types and PDFs especially. We rely on PDFs pretty heavily as an organization. And there are myriad concerns with that, including accessibility concerns. So I think as we go on in the design process, that's something that we'll be looking at for sure. Yeah. Then remind me, your first question?
My first question was, oh, can we look up?
Oh, that's right.
By topic, yeah.
Yeah. So as is probably obvious by how the homepage is designed, search was a theme that came up with literally everybody we spoke to. And so we've talked a lot about making the search more prevalent, but also offering opportunities to filter search and help guide people along with breadcrumbs. You can see on the homepage, those popular searches. Another idea we've played with is if you start typing in, maybe it'll assume you're typing in something to help you navigate to where you're looking for. So we haven't quite gotten into the design of that point yet either, but I know search is a, is a big thing we're looking at. The other piece of that that will tie into the policy side of things is of course, we've got the Tuolton Municipal Code and the Tuolton Development Code, which encapsulate a lot of the policy that you all have set. And those are going to continue to be on MUNICODE meetings, which will be an integration into the website. So we are looking at ways to make those integrations work as, as good as possible.
Yeah, I guess for me, part of it too is just if we have a certain policy around certain topics and if they've been updated or not updated, what's the history and are we hitting our policy goals? Because I think sometimes we, we pass certain things and then they kind of go away. And it would be good, I know from, for this counselor, to be able to look at things, refresh my memory more and more every day and be grounded in, you know, where my goals are and then what, what might be missing or I haven't touched on for a while or we haven't touched on for a while.
To ask a clarification question, are you speaking specifically of the council's vision and goals in that statement or more generally?
No, more, more about just like different policies that we have around, you know, whatever it is. But we pass certain things and sometimes we talk about it quite a bit and sometimes it just goes away. And so I'd like to be able to know where things are and remind myself of the... and remind myself of the things that we did, you know, things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited.
It was on the follow-up question on the searches, because number one, topic. So I'm noticing that popular searches have already some preset, I guess, topics. Would that change with the algorithm, or is that something that you manage?
We have options. So it can be determined based on what is getting the most clicked or the most visits. It can also be determined by what we think people should be looking at, or Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, some combination of the two. I expect that we will want to have some control over what shows up there, just based on timeliness and that type of thing. And some of the items that are pre-populated there are from our knowledge now, based on page visits. But I think there are options. And Dale, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, correct. And that's a terrific question, because it's a little tricky, because if, if I have an event that's coming up, if we have the pumpkin regatta coming up, and I'm only looking at the history for the last 90 days before the event, then it's not going to show up as a search phrase probably. So that's that balance of we want to tweak those results, so it's something that's really going to be relevant and interesting to people, if that makes sense. So a, a dual approach would be good. And as we've kind of gone through and starting to have conversations about these things, we're kind of like, okay, this, this page would go to this section, this would be most helpful. And we'll look at past analytics that you've had in traffic to help determine that list. Great question.
Yeah, one more question. So I see you have an AI. So would AI be part of this whole thing, too?
It can be, yes. So, so, so we could use AI in a variety of different ways on the site. Everything from helping to write like some page titles, so that the, the site would be indexed correctly, or to do, like, create like alt text for images, so that it helps people that are visually impaired with some good description titles. So there's a variety of things that we could do in AI. As, as in most things AI-related, the, the determination of whether you should use or not is really, does it work? And so when we use it, we, we use things that like have a good track record and it works for that. And if it does, then, then, then it's like super useful to use. And technology in, in with web stuff is evolving like it is in AI for so many other things. There's some things it does just super well, and other things that it's getting better at.
So, to me, this is related to the website design, but the internal city overall, and I'm thinking also the master plan that took, it was 35 years, and it took us two years on T-Park to get it moved forward. So is there a way to build some kind of like internal tickler list? So like, he's saying four to six years, so you're looking, you've got these things way in advance on a calendar, so it's like, oh yeah, this year we need to look at this and budget for this.
Yeah, I think so. I think that goes to Counselor Brooks' points about a communication strategy. And certainly, that's a topic that I think would be relevant for the council advance this next year. We've, we've added a lot of capacity. We have our first communications manager position, which I am still feeling really excited about. Thank you, Heidi. But yes, I think absolutely that's something that could be prioritized.
Can I add something, too, that's somewhat related to that? One of the things that we really want to do with this project is to get all of the content be like the best it can be. So we're going to go through and kind of look at all the sections, all the pages, and, and take that vantage point from a site visitor and say, what would they want? And, and building a website is a little bit like moving into a new house. You either go through your stuff before you move, and decide where it's going to go, and decide what you want to keep, and what you want to get rid of, and what you need to add. And that's kind of like this experience. So that's why, as we work on our timeline, we're really going to go through and be diligent about tweaking all that content. So in the future, we just, we'll have to keep it up a little bit and have that plan in place that we're going to work on as, as we kind of wrap that content up, to say, all right, we need to revisit this content every so often, X, right? Like once a year, twice a year. And it'll vary based on content. In, in the web world, we call that content governance. And so that just says, once we get it done, what's our plan to take care of the garden, if you will, right? How often does it need to be watered, pruned, et cetera?
Sorry, Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. So one of the focus group priorities is accessibility and having multilingual access. And I just noticed on this framework that, that's not represented here. So I was wondering what that looks like. Is it up at the top?
Yeah, Dale, can you point that out?
So when I, when I hover that, we use some controls, the design product that we use might cover up it, but it's right here, if you can see it. So the translator will be present right there. And then people will be able to choose, we can have any number of languages that we want to, would go through and kind of AI translate that, that to the language of choice that they would want to be. And, and from a language standpoint, but also, and this was alluded to earlier in what Megan was saying, but we also want images that are representative of the community. We don't want to have stock images where they could be any community anywhere. We want it to be our community, our citizens, ages, genders, like ethnic heritage, all of that information. We want it to feel like this is our, this is our community, right? This isn't just some generic website that's not us. And so from a web accessibility standpoint, for people that are visually impaired, everything will be to the standard that every government at T should make, which is, if I can't see and I had, I use a specialized browser, but I can navigate through the site, I can access any content in a manner that I'm, I'm seeing it. So that will be the standard that we'll build it at. And then we'll monitor that, we'll go in every month and check to make sure that nothing has crept into that. There's, there's two parts with accessibility. It's making sure that you build it the right way in the first time. Think of it as like when you build a physical building, and you have requirements to have signage and handicap parking spaces, and braille usage by elevators, and braille buttons. So there's everything that we built that way. And then over time, you want to maintain that, those standards in the way that you use content, because the, the content on the site, there are rules and standards to meet, so that someone that is using a tab button on a browser can navigate that site if they can't use a mouse or a trackpad, any other device like that. So we'll scan it every month to make sure that those standards are being followed. And then if we need to make any corrections, we'll be able to do those corrections as well.
If I can add really quickly, Colini, who you know from the Idea Committee, participated in one of our focus groups in, in asking questions, his response to one, I think the question was, what would you like to see in the website? And his response is, well, I'd like to see me on the website. I'll send you a picture of me. And so we have brainstormed ways to incorporate community-based photos. So certainly hiring a professional photographer to take photos that we can use, but also soliciting photos from the community to use throughout.
Yeah, he was fantastic. He gave us great feedback.
Yeah.
Counselor Brooks?
I'm, I appreciate that question, too. And I guess one of the questions with that is, is there going to be a tickler in the front? Like, do you want to see this, so that people don't have to search around for their accessibility, so that there's the option in the front if they need support?
I'm not sure I totally understand your question. Would you mind?
Like when you first open a page, it'll say, do you want to see this in English or in Spanish? Or it will say, do you need extra, whatever? Like, there's different ways to write it with a visually impaired search bar, do you need, but just in the front end, instead of them trying to find stuff when they don't, yeah.
My understanding and Dale, I think this black bar along the top maybe will show up on all webpages. Is that correct?
Correct, that's right. Everything in this section and above will show up on all the pages. So they'll be able to see it. That's more, that's kind of the norm of how sites that are done with a translation capability will have something where I can select my language of choice. Now, there's some people, if, if I, I, I can also set my browser settings. If I use Chrome, or Edge, or whatever browser you're using, you can set the default language to that, and the browser will automatically translate it for you. So it's quite possible that someone that really is not an English speaker at all, already has their browser settings set to be automatically translated by that, by the browser. But if not, they can change it here. And then the, the way that websites work for people that are visually impaired, they use a different browser. And the browser that is the, the standard that they'll use is called a JAWS browser. And what the browser does is it will take the, the instructions that we provide within the site, and we, we have a cadence that we'll communicate with that. So for example, if I go to the site and I'm visually impaired, I can do, I can click on a keystroke, and then it allows me to jump to the navigation, no matter where I'm at on the page. And then when I jump to the navigation, then I can jump to the specific page of choice. And that browser will actually read to me all of my options on the page, it'll read all the text or all the navigation. And so it will, that JAWS browser will recognize the site, and it'll automatically translate it, if you will, if I can use that language, not from a language so much, but from a, a, a more of a visual website experience to an auditory and text-based website experience, where they can really get through it quickly. So it'll already happen automatically.
That's amazing. That's...
Does that address your question?
Yes. I used to read to people that were site impaired a long time ago, before any of this. My other question is, when, going back to that searching, has there been any thought about having just one landing page that might be like a research-based type of a thing for people that are looking at this, not from a welcoming community way, but from a policy, legal, et cetera, way, kind of way? So just like, I know that is on some websites that I use for different organizations that have journal articles and things like that, so that you can see what's going on.
Are you speaking to like news that's relevant from Walton, like news releases, that type of thing?
Well, I'm actually speaking towards policy, but that's not a bad idea either. But just like, when the use isn't, I want to sign up for classes, I want to know what volunteer activity is going on. And the warm welcoming thing, which is great, but when somebody is a serious user, and having like a, a part that could be like a sort of a research or whatever term people like, kind of place in utilizing the searches in a way that is different, instead of trying to balance two different uses on the same starting place. That's one question. And then the other question I have is, from my experience on the Arts Committee, is there going to be a way, we have already, like the Art Walk, there's going to be more art. I just came from with Council President Pratt Conference, and we walked around Redmond, and they had a whole art gallery that you could do from your phone and look at who the artist was all throughout the city. And some of the pieces were for sale, and then other pieces the city would buy with small amounts of money. So, but we're not there yet, but we're going to have some great art, and we have, already have a good start. So I just want to make sure that those thoughts are in there.
Could I, could I jump in and respond first, Megan, and then you can add to that?
Absolutely.
So that's one of the great...
Counselor President Pratt is okay with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I apologize, I should have asked that. So that's one of the great things about this section right here, and that I, I really love this for your site because the, as you talk about art in general, the boxes are visually, and they're kind of engaging because of the different shapes. But these things could be changed about anything. So if we wanted to feature Art Walk, just as an experience, this could be changed from this title to Art Walk, and it could take you to a page where you could insert a, a photo gallery of different art pieces that a person could slide through and interact with. And you could list if they're for sale or not, or you could just list, you know, where they're located, or how long they might be up in a certain spot, or anything that's been added.
And these were activated by QR codes?
Yep. Yeah, you could do the same thing. So if you wanted to have a QR code that would take you to that specific page, you could totally do that if you printed it on a material, or, or if it's outside of the piece of art, you know, like it's outside of the frame or something, you could totally do that. So, yeah, and it would take you straight to that. Does, does that make sense for that question?
No, I, I love that. And I just want to say, too, that a lot of times there's images that are up there of art, and these QR codes are really nice because it really honors the artist, and when they made it, and the history, and how the city got it, or what's going on with it. So thank you very much.
Counselor Sacco.
That's great. And we could even add like audio or video. Like, we, we recently did a website for, for a museum of sorts. It's a performance venue in a museum, and it's an art gallery. And within that website, it's, it's really meant to be a self-guided tour, where I would take an iPad when I walk in there, and it takes me on a self-guided tour. I could look at an item based on the room I'm at, or the, whatever it would be, like the, if we did it on a street or a block or something. And then I can view information about that, that work of art, the artist, what the inspiration was. I could even put a video file or an audio file with it to give some kind of a narrative, or maybe that artist was interviewed. Where you could really have as much or as little information about each individual item as you wanted. I love that. And then if I could maybe answer your, your first question, too, about a landing page that would be helpful for people that are looking for specific types of information, that, and that, that we can totally do as well, too. So oftentimes, what will happen with the web is people will maybe bookmark that, that page. Like, for instance, if I go to the projects page, and we actually just had a recent meeting about the projects page from representatives from all the departments, and we said, how can we make this more effective and intuitive and informative for site visitors? And like, that could be a great example, where people could just jump to that projects page and go straight there without having to skip it. It's a little bit like, when you go to a website, if you think of your website almost like going to a, a, a super Walmart or super Target, where they have like 200,000 SKUs inside the store, there's a real knack to letting people find the way that they want to go really effortlessly and conveniently. So in that situation, someone might just, like, if, if you're going to go into a Walmart, if you have to change your oil or your tires, you go around to the side, and then you pull in right there. So we would, the website would be a similar thing, too. If this is where you're going all the time, then you can bark, bookmark this page, or find it in the footer, or have it be a kind of a quick link to get there. And then you can just jump right there.
Counselor Sacco.
I kind of answered my own question. But, so I don't want to take too much time on this, but my question was going to be, is there going to be, and I know that this is getting in the weeds a little bit, more than what we're here for tonight, but sort of a resource page, because we just had our housing conversation, and I did find it on our website. My question was going to be, can we link out to other places, which is here? But I just wanted to note that it took me quite a few searches in the search bar to find that it actually is here. But, and, and that's just, the housing is one example. But, so maybe having it somewhere more obviously accessible for folks, and we heard from folks specifically during that conversation, that, you know, they tried to go one place, it wasn't successful. So having sort of a one-stop-shop for our, our community members that need that assistance, and I do see that it is here. But again, making it more accessible.
Yeah, we've got a couple of pages. I think both are in stages of needing to be updated, one specific to housing, and one more general for community resources. But yes, we can make it more accessible.
Yeah, I guess to play on that, like the housing, but also like, what would be nice to, what, what I think is difficult, like, say someone wanted to start a business in Walton, or someone wanted to put an ADU, like you can look to all the code sections and the permit fees, but it'd be nice if it said XYZ, and there's a list, and it linked you to all those things.
Kind of a how-do-I, fill in the blank?
Right. To make it simpler for people to do that, because it's hard to piece together different sections. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well?
We did have a few discussion questions at the end of the slide deck. I feel like we've gotten a pretty robust conversation. But if folks have other feedback that they'd like to share, I'm happy to take that now, or feel free to reach out to me afterwards.
Thanks for all your work on this, Megan.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Megan, how you been? Awesome. Thank you all for your time.
All right. We're up to council meeting, agenda review, and communications. The Pledge of Allegiance, I think I'm up, but I think Counselor Hillier got missed when we had the veterans? Or was it Counselor, yeah, or was it Counselor Brooks? Someone got missed that time. So how about Counselor Brooks? I think you might have come in. Yeah.
Okay. So Counselor Brooks. We have one proclamation on Native American Heritage Month. Anybody want to do that one? Okay, Counselor Brooks again. Two in a row. All right. And then we have four items on the consent agenda. Would anybody like any of those items removed? All right. Well, let's...
All right. Well, let's go to roundtable. I'll start with Counselor Gonzalez.
I have, I have no updates to provide at this time. It's been quiet.
And Counselor Brooks?
Okay, as I mentioned earlier. Council President Pratt and I went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference for a few days. We went on one really good field trip and one not as good field trip. Which was both having to do with redevelopment and how they're redeveloping down there. There was a great speaker from Michigan and, and some other really good opportunities to talk. And on the way down, it was wonderful because I, I met with a leader of, we met with the leader of the. Of the Warm Springs Tribe about some water and conversations that we've been having. So it was really nice. I also want to bring up that I was at the PAB meeting. Since, I think since last time we met about housing. And brought up the issues with the phone that was brought up, the phone number. And suggested that we look at these eviction prevention questions more carefully. And I also met with Metro Counselor Rosen Thal and asked him same types of questions. And discussed that as the, as they're looking at the bond in the future for housing. I wanted to congratulate everybody who got into a pumpkin. And, and you're a winner just for, just for attempting that endeavor. It looks easier than it is. And we want, we're, I'm really glad that everybody's safe and healthy. And that we had a great time at the pumpkin regatta. At least I did. And it was so great to see the Veterans Plaza as it's moving forward and share that. Just because we, I've got a chance to sneak peek it for a while. And so to see it coming to fruition. And how much space is really on that side that was just kind of lost with that design. Was pretty amazing for me. And I can't remember if I've done anything else. I'm just going to pass it there and thank you.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Yeah, on October 20th, went to the pumpkin regatta and the Parks Department just does a world-class. Job putting on that event. I did get the opportunity to get in a pumpkin. And with that, I was able to invite a lot more. Of my close circle into that, that event. And not that they weren't invited before, I guess they were just had more reason to come to see me get in a pumpkin. And just the comments and to see the joy on their face when they were at that event. That, you know, I've loved for so many years was really great. And lots of comments on the Veterans Plaza space, you know, what was this before? What was here before? So I think it's going to make a great impact on that area, which was wonderful. And second, second, we had the idea committee on the 28th. And we've spent a lot of time on the mission and vision statement. And we're really digging into the priorities for this next year. They will be here next month. So I don't want to steal any of their thunder. I will let them talk about their priorities for the next year.
Counselor Hillier?
Thank you. Well, ditto everything Counselor Sacco said, because I too had the opportunity to be in a pumpkin. And I really was nervous. I, I had heard lots of stories about going numb in a variety of things. And I chose the right pumpkin for me. It was not the fastest, but I did not tip over. So I was very, very pleased. So as far as meetings, our October, WACA Board of Commissioners meeting, excuse me, was canceled, so we'll meet again in November. And I didn't have any other formal meetings, but I did represent the mayor, the Bill Towne. The pastor of Rolling Hills Community Church on Sunday. Had, they had a celebration for he and his wife stepping down after 41 years of service. And I was there for another reason. And so the mayor asked me to give comments. On behalf of the city and appreciation of, of all the services they provide. And then this morning, we had Communities That Care, the launch of the Tiger Turns the Tide side of things. And so I gave a sentence on behalf of the mayor there because he is the chair of the key leaderboard and just welcoming them. So. That is that.
Counselor Reyes?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, excellent pumpkin regatta, another year. And I want to say happy belated birthday to Sheri, Sherlin, who's not here. I know she's enjoying life somewhere else. But yeah, we had the, on, on a, on the business for the city. We had our meeting, the Council Committee Advisory Appointments Meeting. And we interviewed several folks again from our community who are always wonderful. And we were able to select three individuals, which we will talk about that later. But just always, always impressed by our city, by our residents. And those who work also here, but may not live here, but they contribute so much to our community. So thank you all for just taking your time to meet us and talk to us. And, and it's just, you just make us proud. I'm just always impressed about the great talent we have. And the people, the, their heart to volunteer. So it's always amazing to me and I really appreciate that. And thank you.
All right, I have to go in order. So we had, yeah, we had our council advisory appointments committee. And one thing that struck me, I was reading a thing today that volunteerism is way down in this country, but it seems like Tuolton, we're very fortunate. So. And we have great people. And then I had the next morning of the C4 Metro Committee. And this was a little frustrating to me. The metros realized, and they've got Tuolton circled in these big circles at the suburbs and these little towns. Maybe we shouldn't be looking at big TriMet buses, but smaller buses and even like kind of Uber-style. Things to get transport people around, which is a great idea. And so they're going to do this, they're doing a big study. But the closest to us and input they're going to do is a staff at the county level that deals with transportation. So Mayor Buck and I kind of had a comment or two about how maybe you want to talk to the people. That live and work in the community, you know, to at least talk to us and the people that are here to see what the needs really are. So hopefully they took that feedback. Like Counselor Brooks said, we went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference. It was great overall. It's really good to meet people from other cities and, you know, you find your commonalities and issues, but. And we did do two tours. The first one was urban growth boundary expansion in Bend. And well, number one, they're very fortunate. They can just ask BLM for land. But it was, it was a little frustrating because we basically went out and stood on dirt and watched the wind whip it in our eyes. But the thing I did get out of that was that they worked really hard with the developer there. And with the nonprofits and with themselves. So like the developer said, well. We could build this, but we don't have the bandwidth or time to go through all this bureaucratic rigmarole paperwork. And then the city helped with that. So they did have a solution there. And then we went to Ben, or Redmond. That was amazing because. I don't know if you've been to Redmond, but downtown used to be pretty scary place, you know? Like, and they took this motel, two-layer, like a normal L-shaped motel. That they had had shootings in it a few, not many years back. And they took, the city took it and they got a developer in there. And they're making it like, they're, they're just like little three and four hundred square feet units, but they're places for people to live. It's, it, it was amazing, all the work they had done. They took an old school they were going to tear down and they made it into City Hall. It looks like a McMinimans. So I mean, it was, it was outstanding. That was really great. Sorry. Oh, and then I went to, oh yeah, I got to start the regatta run, which was very exciting because they gave away two $20,000 scholarships. And then new one to people going into the trades. And then the pumpkin regatta, I'm the failed pumpkin paddler because I learned humility with a bad knee, but that's okay. It was still fun to get in it. And I got front row seat to watch these two. The League of Oregon Cities, they selected people to be on the joint transportation committee. The people that are listening about input for funding sources and needs for transportation. Megan put, or Megan and Sherlin and our consultants recommended me to put my name in to be on that. The people like the advisory committee, they selected what, one person from the metro area of Portland. And of course the backups were Hillsborough and Beaverton. So I was out of luck there, but League of Oregon Cities. And I was included in the invitation list for kind of their internal group. So I get to hear. The people give feedback from what was said after that, the meeting with the joint transportation committee. And then I, then what they're planning to say going forward. And. There was a lot of concern I heard that. With, you know, the mayor's always talking about that 50, 30, 20 split and we get 20 cents of the gas dollar. Well, they think we just have system development charges and all these sources of funds to pay for our roads at the city level. And there seems to be a lack of understanding by some of the people at the state level. So that was the big concern I heard that they're going to try to address. And then, oh, I, I went to Oregon Agricultural Trust where Keeneland Eastman's presentation for an hour at lunch. And it was really interesting just to hear about it. And that's all I have. So, and Counselor Sacco?
I have a quick question for something that you had brought up. So the transportation and metro. How can we advocate for more community outreach? If they're just going to go to the county and talk to the county, is there a way that we can collectively advocate for more listening sessions?
Good question. I would think maybe I could pull up that thing. I mean, we could send a letter. We could send the letters, you know, as counsel to advocate for more input. Because it really concerned me that like, if you're not going to the source of what you're trying to fix, like, how are you going to know the right solution?
Right. And clearly there's misunderstanding about other things within our, with transportation and funding and everything. I mean.
Yeah, my other concern is that, like we've seen this at the state level somewhat where. They're, they're trying to do the right thing, but there's not recognition that every community is somewhat different and has different issues. To deal with when it comes to transportation. So that's a really good point. And when Sherlin gets back, I'll contact Sherlin and see if we could do something. Go ahead, Counselor Reyes.
It's been a while. So I actually attended another city business meeting. It was the area core meeting. I just, it seemed, it was right after our council meeting last time. So I thought I already, I reported it, but. It was a great meeting. We met, I, I was, I met via Zoom, but it was a, a meeting that we talked about what's going to happen. And, and in the, looking at the ADA, now that the budget has been approved and all that. So they're just going to start fixing some of that parking areas that need ADA accessibility. And all the, just fixing some sidewalks and like adding the stripes or the stripping and all that. Making sure that people know where, where to park. And just, that's, that was the conversation we had. So I just, sorry, I thought I missed. I'm on my way. I know I attended another meeting. So.
All right, we have six minutes. We'll meet back here.